Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the independent city council meeting. It's Tuesday, August 12th, 2014, at 7:30 in the evening, and it's not beastly hot. We're finally comfortable. The records show that we're here, except that Nancy's out. And I think Karen has a card that she'll be sending around that we can all scribble on. So, get well soon. We have just a very slight modification of tonight's agenda, our executive session, and then we'll have some new business continued there, so we have a couple items to discuss there. We have minutes of the 8th and the 22nd of July in front of you. Are they okay with everybody? Oh, and I think they're, did you have the July ones?
Yeah, there's a slight little amendment, yeah.
Oh, yeah, it looks like you guys have scripters there.
Scripters there, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Other than that, is it okay with everybody fine? That's a motion, and a second. All three of us signify saying aye. Aye, and a opposed motion, Karen, thank you very much. Public comment. We have Katrina Cook Kelly, Cokeley. I'm sorry, I blew it. Please, come up to the microphone and welcome to the independent city council. We have five minutes to visit with us. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I want to take the opportunity here at this public forum to introduce myself, Katrina Cokeley, and your organization I am volunteering for, the Monmouth Independent Tenants Union, which kind of started out about a decade ago as a student club at Western Memorial University in Monmouth, but has now reached out and decided to be an outreach organization for the whole Monmouth Independent area, from Monmouth Eastside to Western more community-based organization these days. And our role is to educate tenants, renters with the Monmouth Independence about the Oregon law, about the statutes, and therefore by educating the tenants, also improving relationships between landlords and renters. So, we are an educational organization, and recurring issues from tenants currently that are dealing with funds and are underfunded, underfunded deposits, which I think is an opportunity to kind of open up a conversation and dialogue about renters and what they know as far as deposits go. There seems to be a conflict between a deposit and a fee, which renters are not really aware of. So, we want to discuss and open up a forum about this issue. And also a current issue that I've talked about before with the city hall, the council members, I think, or not yet, is a complaint about how to reach out to the public. Me too, MIT, the Monmouth Independent Center, had a recent issue when we were trying to reach out and follow up on complaints we had or concern we had from residents of a particular private community, which we were then barred from by the law. We were considered as trespassers on this property. And I'm here to bring up this huge issue because how are we, as a grassroots organization, able to reach out to the community in general while some are protected by private entity that bars us from the more educational improvement relationship and relationships and things like that? So, that's what I'm here to address, is these main issues, deposits and private property rights, and how that corresponds with reaching out to the renters and tenants of Monmouth Independent. So, I hope to here with start the conversation with this venue, and also maybe stay engaged, you know, by making the calls and because of such work.
Great. Well, thank you for sharing some information there. Are there any questions for the speaker? Because I would suggest that you might want to make an appointment with some of our staff folks, because there are, I know there are some laws that about private property, but we can go on what. The number of those are not within our purview to control. Those are, if I recall correctly, those are state statutes, but I'm not the attorney, and I don't live this every day. So, I would suggest that some visiting with some of our city staff could be, could be really helpful.
It could be useful for us as well to learn more about the law, our responsibilities as well as our duties on how to respect that, and also not hinder our work to build education with tenants. So, I hope this won't be an issue that can be followed up on with the member, somebody can address me to, or...
I'm going to suggest that Karen, can you make the connection? Because you do, we do have the information on the card, and so...
You can stay in touch.
We have communications, and she looked early, and I appreciate that.
Yep, thank you.
And so, let's see if we can make the connections. Is that okay, staff?
That's great.
Thanks, Karen. I'm going to give this to you, so I don't misplace it amongst my papers here. Chair six.
Thanks.
Thanks so much for being here, Mr. Mayor. Anybody else? Okay. Under reports, I just want to let folks know is that the Oregon Mayors Association was in Pendleton and learned lots of good things. There are lots of people talking about our community, both for our All-American City Award, and the presentations that Sean and others have been involved with on the economic tours, people have noticed. I think you're just blowing no one here, and so others around the state have been noticing. So, that goes well. I don't think I have anything else I need to share at this point. If I could come around, get something later on, share a little later on. So, Mr. City Manager, I think you have a report and a presentation to make.
I do, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, were you going to talk about the bridges, right? Because I think that's pretty exciting news.
Why don't you start, and I'll add to it.
Okay, well, I don't know near as much as you do, but apparently, I think, Hallie, Elizabeth Kalisbro, did give you this letter of support, I believe.
Is that it?
And LBCC is the recipient of a grant from the Oregon Cultural Trust, is that correct? For one or two grants were given, and one of those grants is to create a play called Bridges, which is a play about the independent Latino community and its role in the history of our community, is that correct?
Yeah. This is based on, it's a part of national program that's been done in other places. The college is currently doing one in Albany area, connecting experiences with veterans, and so sharing their story with others, and they, the veterans itself, helped write the play. The same kind of concept, when I heard about this, I was able to approach some of the faculty. They wrote a grant, and the idea is to working with members of our community to tell their story, to have folks here tell their own story. So, it's not a pre-written thing, it's something that will be created by the folks that participate. And so, there'll be some extensive interviews and working with people. I'm real excited about what the opportunities are and the passion and energy. So, more detailed, it'll take me a year to do, but it's going to be done by our residents, for our residents, here in our community, and then who knows, Broadway. Maybe Broadway's not quite the right place, but... So, anyway, thank you for frankly reminding me.
No problem. I think that's it. We're pretty excited to see that get going. So, before I talk to the rest of my report, I'm happy to meet with the tenant team. We met with them previously several years ago on getting some forms up on our website. I think we've successfully done that.
Yes, that is true.
Didn't take so long. But anyway, if Karen has her particulars, we're happy to get together, yeah?
Yeah, it'd be great to kind of renew our ties and move along and keep you informed of our new issues. Thanks.
So, among the others, I haven't given the honor of making a presentation. We submitted a challenge back a little while ago to the community on our Facebook site in asking folks, well, you know, help us get to 1,000 likes, because frankly, this is a great marketing for the city. Well, now we're pretty close to 1,200 likes, but we did promise that who got us to, that the person who got us to 1,000 would be the recipient of an award from the city, specifically a couple of tickets to our local theater. Turns out, the 1,000th like was a New York resident, Jeremy Khan, so this was sort of hard to get, because we didn't really think it was going to be very helpful to send the tickets. But Benjamin Crager, Crager?
Krieger.
Krieger, thanks. Benjamin Krieger's here. And apparently, a local artist who did make the referral, who suggested to his friend to get out there and get that like in there, so instead, Benjamin. Yay! A few words, can I?
I'll just do a few. Independence is a very special city to me. Through my youth and early adult life, I was more or less nomadic for one reason or another. Just moved all over the Northwest, and when I joined the army all over the country and the world, in search of a place where I could finally call home and raise my children, I stumbled upon Independence just by chance. The more I learned about it, the more I loved it. I moved here, got married here, and now, you know, raising my family here, I'm starting a business. And what has been really special for me is I'm a socially awkward person, really shaking right now, and I'm a comic book geek. And it's been very difficult to be accepted anywhere, no matter where I was, it's just hard kind of acceptance for my personality. And Independence has not only embraced me, but it's embraced my businesses, and just wanted to thank everyone here for allowing me to find out.
Well, congratulations and thank you for letting me make an excellent presentation. If you were shaken, we couldn't see it. And maybe it's comic book business that you have?
Yes, I have a small press comic book business called Warrior Beankeeper Comments, and this year I grandstand as graphic design, calling that Warrior Beankeeper Creative. Warrior Beankeeper is actually the two meanings of my last name. And I've really been embraced by the community, and getting jobs and be able to make a living doing what I love. And that is so rare for so many people, and I don't know, my speechless just happens to embrace.
You know, I just want to share that you exemplify the classic American pioneer that, you know, you came to do, you know, found, however you got here, you found a wonderful place, you have a great history, brought your families here, you're entrepreneurial and doing something you love, and moving, moving things forward, and finding success and building upon that success. You know, that's, that's a great American story, that's a great Independence story, both 150 years ago and, you know, 15 days ago, another people came to town. So, I want to really congratulate you. Thank you for being the 1,000th like. You're having your picture taken here, Karen's doing that. And keep us informed of your business, because I think we're very interested in you. So, thank you so much for taking the time to come in, and enjoy moving.
Thank you very much.
All right.
My opinion is very important.
Please do.
As you drive through town, you'll see three billboards that Mr. Krieger was instrumental in creating, and there are a couple of comic books that I saw being looked at over there at the staff table. So, he's made an impact.
Congratulations. Actually, we're aware of, we're at 999 likes. Yes, he is our comic book artist.
Yay! All right, there's hope for me, yeah. So, I've already taken up a lot of your agenda, I have nothing my report. So, the market calendar, Wednesday, August 27th, we're going to have a little presentation at the River Place Apartments, the Terrace property of the cities. A little kickoff event, the mayor will be there, among the many dating terraces we can round up. And it's not quite the first day in the dirt, but, you know, since it's, it's going great guns over there. But it'll be, it'll be kind of a kickoff on the apartment complex, it's well underway at this point. Anyway, so that's 27th, 11:30, there should be food open to the public. We have quite designed what it's going to look like, but we want it to turn out.
There might be heavy equipment.
Maybe.
Staff are over there going, oh my goodness.
We'll put the mayor on track instead. You will be, you should be expecting shortly, talking with questions as ever, whenever you have some. You should, we'll also be talking a little bit more about that later under our real estate discussion. You should be expecting, I believe at our next meeting, I hope, a presentation on behalf of the Hocken Heritage Festival. They are planning a move this year, if they can get it done, and they would like to move into the Inter River View Park, do the entire festival location there, and have both the Beer Garden and the Fresh Hop Festival at that location. So, there'll be two separate locations, or two separate, you know, beerland events. Two stages, we believe, for music, so it's going to be a little bit different event as it evolves and changes its character. We hope to do fireworks across the river at summer, to Western Days, so we can open up a little more space. But one way or another, the goal is to get it done this year at 1:00. I don't know if anybody, apparently you're there, I don't know if you have anything to add to that.
The other thing we're adding is there will be a second ghost walk opportunity at 7:00 on Saturday night for those who don't get to come or don't get to walk on the first one, because we're imposing a limit of, for the first time, 1,000 walkers.
Well, I look forward to the presentation of the council.
Gee, you know anything on this? Let's see, I don't know if we, okay, just a note, we have three new hires this past month, they are all bilingual. You'll get an opportunity to meet them over the course of the next month. In the Works Department, we've hired a gentleman, Juan Rodriguez. At the library, we have hired, who's, who's, I don't know?
Who's I don't know.
I don't know, kind of a butcher, these things too bad. And then Kevin Callejones, it will be our new cultural liaison in the internship position. So, we are pretty happy we'll get those folks to meet you if they have come to council meeting.
Great.
The library has been pretty busy this summer. They have managed to get summer reading game participants, there's 1,049 of those, and some reading programs in June and July was 2,228. I don't know if that's a record or not, but it's a whole heck of a lot.
I believe it's a record, yeah. If it last year, 2012, we're at the box.
Anyway, very busy at the library. We constantly are amazed at how they manage to handle what they have with the limited staff. If you ever got a chance to study the individual statistics like we do, in terms of how much they handle compared to other libraries, you know, per minority, and it's not even close. It's pretty amazing. Parts Plan, if you get on our webpage, you'll be able to get on what's called a mind mixer site. It's a website, it's a software site that we are using to get your opinion and the community's opinion about where to go with our parts master plan. So, take it up, tune it down, the city site can find that, it's pretty easy to locate. Summer Series has probably got some record attendance this year as well, which is getting truly slammed out there. Just great turnout for the events, both for music and the move. I don't think we have the statistics tonight, but I can tell you, from my perspective, sitting in the dog park, we're making a lot of sales, the dog park is getting a lot of, did a lot of dog bills passing through from popcorn, and that's just really, really busy, so that's good. Finally, the original solutions team conducted a tour of LK and the grab design here, and I think they were very impressed, and they've done some good conversations for us, so that was a real positive for the community as well.
Okay, Miss Lamnet? Questions for the manager this evening?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's get into the unfinished business. We have a building construction of the municipal code. And Karen, are you carrying this one?
Sure.
Sure. Did we discuss this at some like last time, if I recall?
Yes, at the last meeting, you reviewed the preliminary proposal for revision of the building code. One of the questions from council was about reasonable cause, and I included in the council packet the response from the city attorney about how reasonable causes are addressed under Oregon law. And so, I don't know if you had a chance to read that, but it should be able to answer your questions as far as that goes. And I don't know if you had any other questions regarding the proposed ordinance, and if you do, I'd be glad to answer them.
Questions for staff at this point? Everybody okay? Okay.
I thought the answer for reasonable cause was very, I mean, really clarify things and give us a way to approach reasonable cause, so it's not on the building's shoulders, it's on the board.
Great. Well, everybody, is a real hit and miss.
Take it out on my question, Tim.
Everybody, everybody got all their questions? Hold on, let's, this is, this is an ordinance, and we can take care of this in all one, one city, if people so desire. So, someone would suggest action?
I move to read the proposed ordinance, Council Bill Number 2014-09 in full, as the text is contained in the council packet for the first time.
Second discussion, all three of us signify saying aye. Aye, and opposed motion, Karen.
An ordinance amending Independence Municipal Code, repealing Chapter 6, Buildings and Construction, and replacing it in its entirety and stating an effective date.
Okay.
I move to read the proposed ordinance, Council Bill 200102014-09, for the second time by title.
Now, motion second discussion, all three of us signify saying aye. Aye, and opposed motion, Karen.
An ordinance amending Independence Municipal Code, repealing Chapter 6, Buildings and Construction, and replacing it in its entirety and stating an effective date.
Okay.
I move to adopt the proposed ordinance, Council Bill Number 2014-09.
Now, motion second discussion. We already talked about this extensively, but it looks like it's a good thing. What else? Good. All three of us signify saying aye. Aye, and opposed motion, Karen. Thank you.
The ordinance will be assigned to ordinance number 1533.
Okay. Onto new business, sewer effluent engineering contract. I will tell you, council members, that at the mayor's conference, there's no more interesting issue. Our spouses are never cease to be amazed at how many people, we have buses and buses looking to study sewer and water plants. I mean, you've never seen a group of people more interested in sewers, and rightly so. Well, then, don't misunderstand, but it's, it's not, you wouldn't, you'd be surprised at how many people are running and diving to get on the bus. It's a lot more exciting than people think. It is, it is. So, tell us what we have in front of us here, and...
Well, you remember back in June, we issued RFPs for work for the Recycled Water Use Plan. We received a grant from New York Infrastructure Finance Authority, that grants about $150,000. We published a request for proposals three times in May, we got a good response to those proposals, but we only got one submission, it was from GHD Industries, just happens to be the firm that Don Whitehead, as you know, works for. It's been reviewed, I reviewed it to make sure it met the minimum qualification requirement, and it did. And it's certainly well within the grant amount. I would like to get the project going, it really should have been here before you in July, but I had some personal issues to deal with, wasn't able to do that, so I'm late about a month late, even getting this started and getting it before you. I would make one note for you, I had a recommended motion for you that asked you to approve it, but also pending approval by the Oregon Infrastructure Finance Authority. Well, they, they sent an email today, and they did approve it, approved you moving ahead awarding contract. So, that part can be left out. And I'll ask you, that you do go ahead and approve the contract, and the project go on.
Questions for staff? Everybody okay?
Say you worked with this company before, or you don't think you're very satisfied with...
Yes.
Go ahead.
I move to award the contract for the Recycled Water Use Plan for $127,230, that's to GHD Industries.
Second. Now, motion second for the discussion, all three of us signify saying aye. Aye, and opposed motion, Karen. Thank you. I think Mr. Irvine gets to talk to us about the community fiesta and their request.
So, Mayor, Council, I think you're all familiar with the community fiesta, formerly known as the Mexican Fiesta. This was actually, the name change actually happened last year, I was just running behind unfortunately. But their desire was essentially, they wanted to appeal to a broader community, they wanted to just be preceded as the Mexican Fiesta, so they wanted to call it the community fiesta. So, for this year's event, they actually are really excited, they have a syndicated radio, I guess DJ is the right word, but he's essentially a motivational speaker named Alex Elpino Lucas, and apparently he's syndicated all across the country and has a big following, and he's going to come here and broadcast from the community fiesta. And so, they're really excited about that. They actually had to end up changing the date of the Fiesta, no, it's on the Saturday during the weekend, they shifted it to Sunday, September 7th, the following weekend, to accommodate his schedule. But they're really excited about it, and partly because I think they're going to be more people, partly because the crowd gets in to linger a little later than 10:00 anyways, which is the previous shutdown time. They'd like to run the physical until 11:00 p.m. at the festival this year. You know, it's, this is something that, for a community event, is not particularly out of line. There obviously would be contact information available, so if you claim a noise, we're supposed to be able to contact and ask them to turn it down. They use their own sound system, other than the Western Days Summer Series sound system, it's a smaller setup, and it doesn't vary much in front volume as the typical setup we have, so I don't think there's going to be a significant problem with it. But under the noise permit, it's going to permit you to approve 11:00 p.m. end time for community events like this, so that's the code before you. Do you have any questions?
Questions for staff?
Does the 11:00 p.m. end time coordinate pretty well with when the Fiesta Festival ended last year?
I believe so, yeah. That's how it's kind of part of the motivation, the festival was more or less anything about that time anyways, and they wanted to make sure it was kosher.
Does a one-time change on the date, will it go back to the original date?
I think so. You know, that's, in fact, I guess one of the enclosures that we do is, you know, people, I'm a little curious how the turnout's going to be this year, because it always has been a Saturday, Friday, weekend, and so shifting it, you know, I think that maybe, for a lot of people, it's just, you just show up on Saturday, it's Saturday, Friday, weekend, it's not so much, you know, looking for posters or advertising for them, so it'll be kind of interesting to see how it goes this year, but I do think they're trying to bring it back to that weekend.
Well, since it's, you know, families will leave early, because the next day is school day, so it probably just naturally evolves by that time.
Yeah, they, they're, you know, there's, there won't be any kind of weird bird or anything, they're very out of, it needs to be a kind of in front of the event, so...
Additional question? Okay. Someone would like to suggest action?
I move to grant a permit for a publication of music for the Pi and Mi Fiesta, to help the Inter River View Park on Sunday, September 7th, 2014, until 11:00 p.m.
Motion second. Everybody okay? All three of us signify saying aye. Aye, and opposed motion, Karen. Thank you very much. Okay. Ms. Johnson, extending workers' cop covers to volunteers. I like this one. Oh, did I miss one? Excuse me, I jumped ahead, sorry, but Karen gets to do the sidewalk one too, my mistake, I was anticipating.
Sorry. I'm not used to having... Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you. When we were going through the building code, we also discovered in the sidewalk code that there were some outdated and obsolete references to sidewalk construction standards. In reviewing it, it was, it was determined that the easiest course of action would be simply to remove all of those standards and reference current public work standards, rotation marks. So, if you will look at your redline version of the proposed standard... So if you will look at your redlined version of the proposed standard, it's basically just removing all of those details and just putting in that language. The draft ordinance has been reviewed by city attorney and it's always her approval.
Questions for staff? Seems like it's pretty strict.
I actually have a question.
Go ahead.
Under Section 2648, abatement by the city, I didn't understand the last part where it says, "Or proceed with an enforcement action" under Section 2640B. Is it just referencing the definition of violation or, I didn't understand what they were trying to say there.
Oh, because 40B, they're trying to say that any violation will be that, so that way it can go to municipal board.
Okay, by referencing the definition of violation, that's what that actually does?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Yes.
That's what it does.
We went to a uniformed system on violations and, you know, listen here. So to that, and we have just basically a graphic that says you either, you know, you're a violation A, violation B, C, whatever. And here's the uniform penalty. And so the reference now throughout the code is to that one uniform.
I guess I'm surprised it didn't say, it doesn't say reference to that violation chart rather than just the definition of violation.
Well, violation technically isn't a definition. If you look at Section 26-40, it's just that, the chapter generally, definitions is A and the violations are B. So it's not necess, it's, just telling you what a violation is, it's not a definition.
As long as you guys understand it. Just think of what I mean.
Other questions here? If not, someone can suggest action.
I move to read the proposed ordinance, Council Bill Number 2014-10 in full as the text is contained in the council packet for the first time.
Motion second, all thers signify say aye. And opposed, motion carries.
An ordinance amending Independence Municipal Code repealing IMC Chapter 26, Streets, Sidewalks in Public Places, Article 2, Sidewalks, Division 2, Construction, Maintenance and Repair, and replacing Division 2 in its entirety and stating an effective date.
Okay.
I move to read the proposed ordinance, Council Bill 2014-10 for the second time by title only.
Motion second, discussion, all thers say aye. And opposed, motion carries.
An ordinance amending Independence Municipal Code repealing IMC Chapter 26, Streets, Sidewalks in Public Places, Article 2, Sidewalks, Division 2, Construction, Maintenance and Repair, and replacing Division 2 in its entirety and stating an effective date.
Okay. Someone?
I move to adopt the proposed ordinance, Council Bill Number 2014-10.
Second. A motion second, any discussion? All okay? All thers signify say aye. And opposed, motion carries.
Council bill is passed and will be assigned to ordinance number 1534.
Now we can get to extending workers' comp coverage.
So, you have before you an amended resolution as, with a new format as proposed by the city attorney. The old format was one proposed by CIS, but our attorney likes her format much better because it takes care of stuff at the beginning where it should. This is a pro forma, basically, resolution, we pass it every year. Eight hundred dollars a month assumed wages for public safety volunteers sounds low. However, Oregon law states that public safety volunteers get to add in their wages from their real jobs when they have purposes of calculating workers' comp charges. So eight hundred dollars is not considered a well amount. And office workers will be covered at minimum wage rate and boards and commissions are covered at twenty-five hundred dollars a year.
Any questions? We do this every year. Okay? Assuming there's no questions, there is, please, please suggest action.
I move to adopt the resolution, working that's directed at the first compensation. Coverage to volunteers for policy, 2014.
Second. A motion second discussion, all thers signify say aye. Did I get ayes over here? Okay, okay. All opposed, motion carries, thank you very much. Yay! Okay. Is there any other business before we go to executive session?
I can give you a update on Nancy Lodge.
Do we want to do that for the public? I think we did. Go ahead.
I think so. Councilor Lodge had knee surgery, knee replaced surgery yesterday. I visited her today, everything is very good and she's coming home.
Okay. That's good. Okay, council, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna go to executive session and we're gonna come back and we'll have some business to transact, I anticipate, at the end of the executive session. Are there any other announcements to be made at this point? Okay, the city council now meeting executive session for the purpose of negotiating real property transactions, the executive session, PRAS, ORS, 1926602E, which allows the council meeting executives at. For the news meeting designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. For the news meeting is specifically directed not to report any deliberations during the executive session, except if state or general subject of the session is previously announced. The city will be in a executive session. It's time the council to enter the conference room for the duration of the executive session. Once the executive session is returned, we will return to open session in the council chamber. We're now adjourning to executive session. Do what you want. Try not to be too long. I'm calling us back into session and I would entertain a motion for action. Someone would still read.
I move to adopt by October 22nd, 2013, council motion and authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents to complete the sale of the entire Terrace property, C Block Number 2001, as one parcel for purchase price of 200, $350,000.
I have a motion to second, is there discussion? This is good. Any other discussion? All thers signify by saying aye. And opposed, motion carries. Is there any other business tonight?
You would be chair?
All thers say aye. And we're done. Thank you very much. Hey, and it's still light, you can go home. Can I quit my press?